Okay, good evening. Welcome to our first face-to-face meeting in over a year. This is the Grand Blank Township Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, April 6th. If you could rise and let's recite the pledge together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's good to see everyone in person and hopefully everybody's staying healthy and we can continue to beat this back and meet in person in the ongoing future here. So we have Clerk Robertson, would you like to call the roll?
I most certainly will, thank you. Trustee Hugo?
Here.
Trustee Fike?
Here.
Trustee Raridan?
Here.
Trustee White?
Here.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Here.
Of course, I'm here. Supervisor Bennett?
Here.
Seven members present, a quorum.
Okay, thank you. And now I'll ask for an approval of the agenda if somebody would like to do that. I think we have one change in that the approval of the minutes in the consent agenda, we're going to only ask for the approval of March 23rd as opposed to the March 30th minutes.
There you go. I'll make the motion if that's appropriate, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay. To approve the regular agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Supported by trustee Fike?
Clerk Robertson, supported by Fike. Alrighty.
Any discussion?
Okay, record roll call. Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we would ask that the public, if they would like to make any comments, we have some public present here at the meeting, but we also have a few individuals attending online as well. And I would ask that if you want to make comment, that you keep it to three minutes. To raise your hand online, what you would do is move your cursor to the bottom of the screen, click on the Participants icon. The list of participants will come up on the right-hand side of the screen, and at the bottom of that list of participants, there should be an icon for raising your hand. If that's not working with, we don't have a lot of people online tonight, so I guess if you just want to unmute yourself and identify your name and address, we can go ahead and let you speak too if you can't find the hand raise button. Okay, seeing no public comment online, and nobody here at the township hall would like to make public comment, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. And we're very pleased to have with us John O'Brien from Genesee County Water and Waste, and he is going to make a present, a few presentations here this evening on upgrades to the water and sanitary sewer systems. And, good evening, Mr. Brian. Let me bring up the presentations.
Yep.
I'm going to share my screen here.
As Supervisor Bennett indicated, my name is John O'Brien, Director of Water and Waste for Genesee County Drain Commissioners Office. Also with me tonight is Dan Potter, who is the Deputy Drain Commissioner. He's in grading me tonight, so I gotta do, I gotta get good points. At Genesee County Water and Waste, we provide water and sewer supply to 34 communities. And every 20 years, we develop a roadmap for where we're going over the next 20 years. So a master plan, just similar to a township master plan. The last time we did this was in 1999 and 2000, and so we worked off that master plan for the last 20 years. We go through it, update it every five years, kind of many amendments, but the last year, we decided we needed to do a complete renewal of the 20-year master plans for both the water system and the sewer system. We didn't do anything on the water treatment because we had just completed the water treatment plant in 2017, so there wasn't a need at this time to do a master plan for water treatment. But we did do the distribution system, collection system, and sewer treatment. As part of that program, we contacted all 34 communities, got their most updated master plans for sewer and water use, kind of tallied all that need, and then we had to figure out based on all of these needs for your next 20 years, what we need to do to provide water supply and sewer supply to the 34 customers. What we did is we ended up producing three large documents. We did submit a copy of each of these documents to the township, and what I'm going to do today is just kind of go over a quick overview of the systems, what we're projecting to need over the next five years. So, with that, let's get started. The first one is our, is our water treatment system. This is a kind of a skeletonized map of our water supply system. This does also include local municipal water supply systems too, so you can, you see is we serve all the way from Grand Blank Township all the way to Montrose, and then east and west. So it is a fairly large system. What we identified is, over the next five years, we have five immediate needs for water supply, and this is mainly associated with storage. We have water towers, we have need to make sure I can get water to each of the customers during emergencies or with power outages. With the changeover from Gleewa to Genesee County Water Supply and the Water Treatment Plant, we have a, basically a hole in our water system, which is the north end of Grand Blank to, to the water treatment plant. I have no storage in that facility because historically we relied on Gleewa and Detroit to continuously supply its pressure. So the main project is the Center Road Elevated Storage Tank. Basically, we'll be putting a elevated storage tower near Atherton and Center Road, and that will give us emergency, emergency water supply during power outages, and that's just the one need area. The second is, we have two water tanks, the Anthony Ragnar Treatment Plant Elevated Storage and the Clyo Road Storage Tank, that are underutilized. Basically, we have a significant problem that during the fall and spring, they stay full. And if they stay full, they don't circulate and we get older water. So, to reactivate those towers more efficiently, did I do something, or did you?
No.
So with that...
Somebody was saying that they weren't seeing it on Zoom screen, so I was trying to see if there's an issue, but...
So, basically, by doing some valving, we'll get those tanks to operate and turn over and basically become more efficient. And then the last one is the Fenton Road Booster Tank and Station Ground Storage. This is, right now, I have a pumping station at Fenton Road and 475. It is an inline station with no tankage, but based on the projected growth of the area to the south, that we long-term need to put storage in at that location and upgrade those booster stations. So, those are kind of the, the main projects we're looking at over the next five years. And this, oh, so quickly, this kind of gives you the slides as we talked about, the Center Road Tank.
Pumping station at Fenton Road.
Echo. So, and then the three tanks. And then this is long-term, or what they call it short-term, this could be over the next 10 years, but it's basically died by demand. Basically is, is making some improvements to our pumping stations, as well as some fire flow improvements and fire flow protection. So, these are items that, depending on demand, whether we do them or not, so, let me, let me take a step back. We do a 20-year plan, but it really is based on growth. So, we take your master plans, you say you're going to have 35,000, 40,000, 50,000 people over the next period. We do that, but we also realize that those are projections also. So we watch our water flow and water volume, and when we hit certain marks, not time, but when we hit certain marks is when we begin projects. So, these are a little bit longer out from our immediate need, these are in the next five years, not the first five years. And these are again, fire flow protection. As City of Clyo grows, and that area grows, we will see a decrease in the availability to do fire, fire protection or water pressure. So we've got plans to add additional water lines when that occurs. And then what we have is, our system is getting to the point where we are now about 60 years old. And so we do now have water main that are 60-plus years that are reaching their useful life, and the cost to make repairs is more expensive than replacement. So we keep, we keep track of our repairs on the distribution system, and these are just identified those areas, those pipelines that are reaching their age, but again, we will track the repairs needed versus the replacement. So, it's a tracking method there. And then we have redundant supplies. Right now, as example, I've got the backside of the City of Schwartz Creek in Gaines Township, they're being fed by a single line through the City of Schwartz Creek. As that system grows, we will have to bring in a second line for a redundant water supply. So, those are the types of things that we track as part of our master plans. Next one?
Okay. Run over here, Robbie. Right there's the Zoom. There, just a moment, John. Right there? Right there?
Yeah, well, it's supposed to be...
That's the one right there, right? Let's see. Is that one right there?
Yeah, share that one.
Click on that. It's on it? It's on there? Alright.
Okay.
I think we're good now.
Alright, technical difficulties corrected?
Yeah, we wanted, they could see the screens, but it was through the cameras, and we wanted them to be able to see a real clear picture.
Okay. The next thing I wanted to talk about was the Anthony Ragnar Treatment Plant. This is, this is the treatment plant located in Montrose, Michigan, which does, oop, now you've got control.
Yeah. Well, the public can see it, whether or not...
No, I, I can't.
You're not able to see it?
No, I can't.
Can't advance.
I can't advance now.
Okay. You tell me when you want to advance.
Go ahead.
What's, what it's doing is it's advancing it for the public, but it's not advancing it in here.
Well...
So...
You need to correct that, Mr. Superintendent.
Let's, we'll, we'll take it off the share so that it's on the camera again, I think. Let's, Robbie, if you can help me.
We want to provide access to our constituents, but...
But they, yeah, so let's...
More imperative, you see it at this moment, don't you think?
Oh, if you...
How'd we get to that?
Yeah, well, but then, these guys can't see, no, but they...
Oh, here we go, good one.
Okay. Alright, well, it's light.
Okay, I'll go back to it. Okay.
Mine.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, try it now, John.
Okay.
For some reason, it's not, Robbie, I'll advance it.
Okay. Go ahead and advance.
Hmm. Hey Robbie, it's not advancing now.
Look at the chair.
The clicker isn't advancing it, and it isn't advancing on the screen.
Perhaps we should stand at ease at the call of the chair, Mr. Supervisor.
Bear with us for just a moment.
What's the password?
Which one?
It was the middle one. That didn't disconnect the Zoom, did it?
All lowercase.
It was the in-between one. Got to share the screen. Yeah? Let's go, let's share the...
Windows.
Okay.
Alright. the, the service to the whole northern part of the county except for Argentine and Fenton Township. So again, we did the same process. We identified each of the community's needs and growth patterns over the next 20 years. It works now, alright. And we came up with a, a plan for the next 20 years, that if everyone's projected growth occurs, that I will need $143 million to make improvements to the treatment plant to match growth. And again, that's, that's a scary number, but it, it's not because it has every possible growth to the maximum. This treatment plant would go from 30 to 80 million gallons a day. So, that is what everyone's plan indicated, and as again, as I say, is we do it by year, but when we get into the reality, we work on it as flow increases. In 2021, we received our permit from the state of Michigan, so I received a permit from the state of Michigan to discharge our effluent into the Flint River, and as part of that, they give us limits on our flow for what we call CBOD, suspended solids, ammonia and phosphorus, what we are permitted to discharge. These permits are good for five years. One of the keys that they gave us in our permit was, we have to do an I-N-I program, inflow and infiltration for the county as a whole. To give you a kind of an understanding of, of that is, during normal, like today, we're doing about 30 million gallons a day in wastewater treatment. During this last rain event, a week ago, that flow jumped to 70. So we're getting a lot of excess flow into the collection system, not just from one community, but it's pretty consistent over the entire county. And a good reason for that is, we live in clay. So every time someone digs a basement, they dig a hole, when water, when the rain pours, it goes into that hole, and the only way to get it out of that hole is a sump pump. Now, most sump, sump pumps are supposed to go to storm sewers. They're supposed to pump to the storm sewer. If there isn't storm sewer, you're supposed to put it on your backyard, or there. Problem is, you have a storm, you got water in your backyard, no, they tie it and hook it into the sewer. So, we have that flow coming in. We also have a county drainage system that doesn't meet a 25-year rain event. You know, I've got culverts under roads that only meet 10-year. So we have flooding. It may be small and localized, but it's still truly flooding. And so that's one of the things that we have to evaluate over the next five years, is identify where our excess flow is coming from, and is there an economical way to remove it? The other thing that we have a concern with our treatment plant is PFAS. PFAS is basically in every, almost every product that we know of. It's in our carpeting, it's in our clothes, it's in our furniture. When people do washing, it ends up in the sewer system. Luckily, we're able to remove it at the treatment plant, but it ends up in our solids, in our, in our solids. And right now, we apply that solids to farm fields as, as a fertilizer, soil amendment. So we are concerned, while our limits are very low, we are detectable, but very low, we are concerned over time, it will prevent us from going to land application. A, a good example of that is, we used to do a lot of land application on wheat fields, and then one of the major flour producers said, "I do not want any wheat that comes from farms that had biosalads placed on it." So we lost a lot of the wheat fields because of public perception that it's not a good product, and it's not safe product. So, we are concerned about that, yes.
So John, one of the things I know that, you know, we've talked about on the board is that, so there's PFAS in everything, from makeup to carpeting to clothing that we buy. Nobody's eliminating, nobody's saying that it has to be eliminated from the products that we buy or make, but they want you guys to eliminate it from the end...
Yeah.
So it goes through, it's not the food chain, but it goes through basically the economic chain from manufacturer to consumer, whatever.
Yeah.
But then they want you to make sure there's zero percentage or zero amount of it in what you discharge, either in solids or in liquid.
And I, and I use the example is, if you look at the wastewater treatment plant as a manufacturing facility, we have a limit on what, what we produce, but I have no control over my raw materials. So, that is a concern. Right now, we only have one method of, of land application for solids disposal, and so that's what we're looking at in the first five years. In fact, we're, we're under design right now, one, to create, to de-water, so we squeeze the water out of the material, which will reduce our volume in half, and then we're also looking at digestion, which will also reduce it by another half. So, right now, we produce about 30 million gallons of sludge a year. By doing the de-watering and the digestion, we can get that to about eight or nine million, which then gives us opportunities to find other locations to dispose of if land application is no longer viable. So that, that's kind of our biggest concern over the next five years, and so that's what we're concentrating at the treatment plant. These are little improvements that we've added as part of the treatment process, the fermentator. I could, I know you guys aren't really excited about wastewater treatment, but I can give you a whole story on what fermentation does.
So John, if, if you're not able to do land application, so where does it go, where, what's the alternative? Put it in a landfill, or what?
Landfill. So right now, that's...
Which is probably much more costly than what we're doing now.
It, it's about double the cost for, for treatment, and if you think about wastewater treatment, 30% of our cost is in sludge or biosalads handling, because that's, that's really our main product. You, you think about it, the water that we're discharging to the Flint River is our byproduct. Our whole thing is taking, the whole process is to concentrate the solids into as small volume as possible, and then the water is, is discharged back to the river.
So it could get more expensive for sewage treatment in the future here?
Yeah. The other thing that we're looking at at our treatment plant is, treatment plant was built in 1974. I'm still running 1974 electronic equipment to run that plant, so that's pretty, we've got it taped together right now, so we are looking at, at upgrading to, to new computer systems and new software. And then some metering, and then the other concern we have is, right now, we do have two power supplies from Consumers Energy for the treatment facility, but in the last two years, we've had power outage on both, both lines. So we are looking at, at adding some generation to the treatment plant in case of emergency so that we can continue to treat and accept wastewater from the local municipalities. Got a, got a few things, some small grid improvements, and again, as I said, we do have the, the township does have the, the full binders, you can go through it in detail on, on these documents. Some more dealing with solids handling is the conditioning of the sludge to make it more readily de-waterable. Okay, next one?
May need some help here, Robbie, if...
This is, this will be the last presentation. It'll only take a half hour now. Okay. And then the final one we, that we want to talk about tonight is the sewer collection system. And we kind of touched, based on that, as part of our discharge permit, we are looking at the collection system. One of the things that is coming to the communities is, the state is looking at issuing a general permits to local collection systems. So, to get an understanding is, right now, Grand Blank Township operates and maintains its sewer system. You actually do that under our existing permit to discharge to the Flint River. The state has decided that they need to have the ability to regulate you directly, so that they are going to create a general permit, which will be issued to each local municipality that, that chooses to operate and maintain their sewer system. And again, that is their desire. So we've identified some improvements over the next five years, and mainly, it's, it's in the form of pump stations. Pump stations are the mechanical devices in which we lift the sewage so we can gravity flow, and so you think about it as, is basically, I have to move sewage all the way from southern tip of, of Grand Blank to the northern tip of Montrose Township. So, I've got to lift it, let it flow by gravity, lift it, let it flow by gravity, lift it, flow. So, this is actually our oldest lift station. It is the Fenton Road Pump Station, built 1961, and it is under replacement right now, so this, that station is currently under reconstruction. Pump Station 3, Pump Station 3 is one of our 1966 version pump stations. As part of the Northeast Relief Sewer, and you may be, may or may not be familiar with it, originally, all sewage in the county went clockwise around the city of Flint. When we built the Northeast Relief Sewer in, in 2000, we brought a line basically from Davison and moved it counterclockwise around the city of Flint to Montrose. What that did was redistribute sewage from pipes, so as example, Pump Station 3 is now oversized and old, so we're, we're also properly sizing these lift stations to match the current flow. And again, as you, as you see is, the normal flow is about four billion gallons a day, but during wet weather, we have 19 million going through it. So, we have to accommodate that to, to get it to the treatment facilities. Pump Station 4 is on the same line. This one is, we're basically going to be able to rehab it, not replace it, and work with the structure that we have there. And again, Pump Station 5 is, is similar. The Northeast Relief Sewer changed the flow coming to it, so we'll be able to work with that structure and, and properly size the pumpings. The big one is the Kursley Creek Interceptor. This is basically an extension... This is basically an extension of the Northeast Relief Sewer. The Northeast Relief Sewer stopped just north of I-69, and long-term, it was to extend southward to basically the Genesee Oakland County line. And so what this does is, similar to the Northeast, where we split the flow in the county, bringing in the Kersley Creek Sewer will pick up the communities of Goodrich, Davison, and also split the flow of Grand Blank Township going north and going west. So, this again, is rebalancing flow to the community as well as the future service area for Oakland County. We will be having a meeting later, in about a month or two, to go through this project in more detail with the township. But basically, is, it's the same as the Northeast Relief Sewer, is based on growth patterns, how to balance flow, utilize to the maximum extent possible the sewers that we do currently have, and add new sewers instead of digging up and replacing existing sewers. Building sewers, that'll be the most cost. Yes?
John, one of the things, you know, I think that for the public and our board, you know, and one of the things I've learned over the last few years is that, the reason why this is so critical is that, you know, we're looking at building out Tech Village, we're looking at, you know, there's a lot of developable property in Grand Blank Township still. And if we're going to be able to develop that, we have to have sewer capacity, right?
Yeah.
And in some of these areas, I believe, we're probably getting closer, or will be getting closer to capacity. And once a capacity is reached, and I know Director Sears probably can talk to us too as we move through this in the next months, but, you know, as we reach that capacity, it means, I mean, I imagine there are communities that have to come to a halt in terms of development if they don't have capacity.
Yes. We basically did that in 2001. We basically had to put a moratorium on construction for about six months until we developed the plan for the Northeast Relief Sewer. So, that's part of this longer, long-range planning, is we don't want to interfere with the ability to develop known existing land that you've already identified. And so this is kind of, we're ahead of the game now than when we were in 2001, when we had to shut down.
So one of the things I found interesting about this project when we've talked about it, this Kersley Creek Interceptor, is that currently, we have some flooding in the north part of the township, northwest portion, sewage backups, what have you. And interesting enough, even though this development is in the south part of the township or the west side, it actually relieves the flow that goes through the north.
Yes.
And unfortunately, you know, a lot of the homes in that northwest portion probably have their sump pumps connected to the sanitary sewer, which contributes to the, you know, when we have a rain event, they're complaining that their sewers are backing up in their basements. But on the same note, with a lot of them, if not, you know, majority of them having their sump pumps connected to the sanitary sewer, it contributes to that. What my understanding is, this project would relieve some of the pressure from that area.
Yeah. We've, over the last 20 years, we've actually been working on that with Grand Blank Township. A good example, it was the Kerrwood Lift Station and the building of the Western Subtrunk, which shot basically Outread Road to the west. Basically, we were moving the water from Bush Creek westward towards Monday and up on the Schwartz Creek Interceptor, up to Pump Station 1. And this is kind of the same thing, is, in doing this, we will take the village of Goodrich and Atlas off of the Grand Blank system, put them directly onto a county system, move flow away from the Bush Creek up north towards Davison. And again, that relieves that area of the northwest, because right now, everything has to funnel northwest up to Pump Station 2. So, we've been working with your Public Works Department and trying to maximize the available sewers that we do currently have, and how to build the minimal amount of sewer, but have the same end result where we have good flow and not backup, and deal with the I-N-I that we have in the collection system. So it's a bit of a balancing act.
And it increases our capacity for future development.
Others that we have, while it doesn't affect Grand Blank, is the Davison branch of the Kersley Creek Interceptor. Similar situation where we have Davison flowing through the city of Davison, trying to build a section of sewer to balance that flow between the two communities. And that basically is, in a nutshell, our 20-year master plans for water, sewer, and wastewater treatment. As I indicated, we look at this project over the next, we look at it every five years, update the plan based on information from our local municipalities. And we try and keep the local municipalities informed. The big question is, is why am I doing this? As part of the 20-year master plan, we have completed the master plan, and I now need to take that information developed in the plans, and I have to insert them into our rate model. So during this year, we will be working on our rate model to do a prediction on what money we need to do our water rates. And for most of you new members, Genesee County does a step rate system, where we raise water, we raise water and sewer rates once every five years. So basically, we raise and then stabilize for five years. So we have to kind of have a projection of our operating costs and our capital outlay for the next five years to determine that rate. And typically, what happens is, the first two years, we make money, third year, we break even. The last two years of the five-year rate cycle, we lose money, but it's a flat curve. And we did, we did, I'll pat myself on the back, we did quite well. Our last rate increase was 2014, so we're already in the seventh year of our last rate, five-year rate cycle. So, that is part of the process, is I wanted to make sure you guys understand what we're, what we need to do and what we're looking at over the next five years, and then come back in six months, you guys don't beat me up too badly.
Thank you very much, John. Go ahead. Sure.
So, just looking at the slides, and I noticed that after each one, it said estimated cost, 3 million, 7 million, and then estimated cost, 23 million, and then in parentheses, it says funded by municipalities, only after the 23 million. Is that, because, the only reason, Grand Blank Township has to be, happens to be in that 23 million.
Yeah. What that project is, is because Oakland County wants to come into the system, they are not currently a member of the system, they're not a member of the 34 communities, that is why we kind of put that connotation there, is, when we did this, is a good example, when I did this sewer project in District 3 for Livingston County, Livingston County basically had to write a check for the project.
Mr. Feig?
I got a couple of questions. Where, you've got 34 customers in Genesee County?
34 community customers, yeah.
Where does Grand Blank Township fit in that as far as water usage?
You're our largest water user. You use approximately 25% of all the water we produce, and on the sewer system, you're about 20% of our waters, our sewer system.
We're number one.
You're number one.
Except for sewage. We're number one, but we're less.
All right. What, you know, I see that whole map of Genesee County, obviously Flint's got a contract with Detroit, so they're not involved with this. But are there other potentials besides Oakland County to be added to this system, other jurisdictions?
Yeah. We have a, basically, a, when we took funding for the construction of the Anthony Ragnan Treatment Plant, we were given a service area. And that service area included five townships in Oakland County, six townships in Lapeer County, like five townships in Livingston, so many in Chiawassee, and so many in Saginaw. So basically, it kind of follows the watershed of the Saginaw Basin, that, because everything kind of flows gravity, so anything along the Kersley Creek, anything along the Flint River, anything along the Schwartz Creek, those tributaries, because it all flows by gravity that way. So-
I guess my point is, if you added customers, would our costs go down?
Yes.
So if like Otisville or one of these jurisdictions that doesn't currently get water from you, is added to the system that, that's a plus, and do you see that happening?
Well, yeah. And it'll tell you, in early 2000s, the 2000s, when we saw this significant growth and this migration out, we were able to sustain rates at a fixed rate because we had enough growth to cover our operating cost increases. Our operating costs with electric, chemical, and that goes up about 3% a year. Our fixed costs pretty much stay flat, but that's only about 25% of our budget. So if I've got 3% of my budget going up, 75% going up every year by 3%, I've got to have almost a 2% growth to match that, to keep rates stable.
So maybe.
Yeah.
John, just to clarify, so you mentioned that the treatment, or when we accepted federal funds for building the sewage treatment plant, it included those communities outside of Genesee County?
Yeah.
Is that just for sewage, or is that water?
We didn't take any federal money when they developed the water system.
Those were, I think Mr. Feig's also wondering, maybe in terms of selling water, can we expand where we sell water to, maybe?
Well, we can, and we're working on that. The two major developments, which are on the southern end because of the arsenic in the groundwater, those we are working with, but they're just not at that point yet where they're ready to take that leap.
Right. Mr. White?
The county's left 20,000 people that's been in the Flint River. How's that progressing?
With the county, we have a certain service area. So as you say, the county is 430,000, and it's lost 20,000, so it's like 410. Right now, I provide sewer service to about 210,000 of that 400,000. So the sewer system is growing in the new development areas. And to be honest, the areas that are losing population are not serviced by water and waste.
So there's something, well-
Yeah.
How are they?
Yeah. Yeah.
So John, one of the things you mentioned was, you know, the cost, everybody, you know, I know that, you know, cost is a concern, and everybody throughout the country thinks that they have the most expensive water, no matter what community you go to. Maybe you can talk just briefly what drives the cost? It's the utility, electricity, right, for-
It's, right now, it's electricity and chemical. The other is, as I indicated, we're reaching a point where we're 60, 70 years old. When we built this system, we had an 80% grant from the federal and the state. Those grants don't exist anymore. So as we make repairs and have to upgrade or replace aging equipment, it is 100% on the local municipality or the county. So-
So when we put those pipes in the ground, it isn't forever?
No.
We don't see them, so we figure they must be good, right?
So when you said, local jurisdictions are going to pay this 23 million, or jurisdictions, you know, President Biden's been saying he wants to do all this stuff for infrastructure. Could some of that come from the feds?
We are waiting for the rules to come out. We have been in contact with Representative Kilde. They are working on the rules, and we're understanding it could be six to 18 months before those rules come out finalized, but we are keeping track. And just as, as the local municipality, you receive some early funding, the county has also, and we're putting in, we've put in, putting in an application to use some of that money that the county received for this water and sewer infrastructure. So, we are going to try and get any money we can out of the federal and state government.
Clerk Robertson?
Thank you. Just a question from earlier in your presentation, you mentioned that you anticipated cost over 10 years is 143 million? Was the figure that I wrote down?
Yeah. Basically, if the growth projections that each community provided us comes to fruition, the wastewater treatment plant would go from 30 million gallons a day operating to 80 million gallons a day operating, and that would cost us about 143 million to meet those needs over the next 23 years.
My next question, you might be able to anticipate, how accurate were we with the last 10-year projection as it relates to, as it relates to the cost?
I would say is, because both five-year rate projections, both of them lasted seven years, I'd say we were pretty good. Scott knows, when I do budget, I'm very conservative on revenues and very liberal on expenses, so that at the end of each year, I try and show a balance.
Very good. I remember years ago in a previous life as a county commissioner, that, this is 20 years ago now, presentations that were made about examination of the system within a system using electronic devices, they called them PIGs, I guess, and that, how, speak to the maintenance of our, have we been able to maintain our system well over the, over the years? How would you, how does our system rate in terms of, in terms of its overall?
Our system is what we would call a wet system. We're not dry. And again, as I indicated, that's mainly our soil conditions. On the west side of the state, you have sand and gravel, you don't have a lot of infiltration. But because of our system, in this clay and in prone to flooding, we are a wet system. We have, over the last 20 years, put significant money into TV inspections. We are now on a, we were on a seven-year cycle. We found that seven-year was, was too aggressive, we're not, we've now figured out, on a 10-year cycle, that we can go in and map and televise our sewer system on a 10-year system, that will identify any potential underground unseen failures, and avoid blockages or, as our communities to the west of their sludgebergs, we don't, we don't have those in our system. We work constantly to keep the grid out. We do have an industrial pretreatment program that is working with our industries and restaurants to make sure that we don't have that grease and material coming into our system. So, we're working every angle we can, is, we're trying, we're working with the Drain Commissioner's Office on the surface water side to try and make sure we can get storm drains in locations where we know we have no storm drains, because that's where people are now putting it in the sewer. So we're balancing that, we're working with the restaurants to keep the grease out, put grease traps in. So, we're trying to control what is actually getting into the sewer system.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Sears, Mr. Potter, anything that, do you want to comment on with regard to? Director Sears, our director of our Township DPW?
I can inundate you with more information, that's a lot to digest. But just remember, it's all very important, because everything that John said plays into our system in Grand Blank Township, which is very large. He indicated the size of customer we are in Genesee County, and what we represent in the whole county. I will, you'll hear me say over and over again, our water and sewer systems, I believe, are top-notch. They're very well-maintained. You mentioned maintenance. We have a very aggressive cleaning and televising program, where we essentially get through our entire system within five to seven years. We put $300,000 a year into lining and grouting our system. Basically, when they talk about I-N-I, they're talking about the infiltration into the, you know, the sewer laterals. And what we do is, we hire a company that'll come out and line the pipes, and basically seal those up the best we can. We know that we have issues with sump pumps. Scott discussed the northwest portion of Grand Blank- Scott discussed the northwest portion of Grand Blank Township. We know that's probably our biggest area that we need to attack, but that's a big monster of a project to be able to get into people's homes, ask for their cooperation, and then have the systems in place where their sump pump can be disconnected from the sanitary sewer system and put into the storm system. So I, you can rest assured that Grand Blank Township has a very well-built and maintained water and sewer system. Obviously, without Genesee County's system, we would be in a much different place. And it's growing every single year, so you'll, you'll see lots of those projects coming up shortly.
When we do a street project, we also try to address some of the sump pump connections, right?
We do. Lately, anytime a subdivision has been doing special assessment districts, we've been offering the installation of a sump collector system. And those are primarily in subdivisions that do not have open ditches. Like Ms. Hugo's subdivision is about to be repaved. Her subdivision has open ditches, so we wouldn't put a sump collector system in there. We recently did one in Concord Green, which is across the street. And we, we did a sump collector system where people can disconnect their sump pumps from the sanitary sewer and tie it into there. The thing to be cognizant of is when we put these sump collector systems in, it's on the township to maintain them and to track them and to provide the administration for them. That's our asset, not the road commissions, not the drain commissions. So that is something that we like to offer, just because of the INI issue.
I concur, Mr. Sears. I participate in monthly meetings with the Genesee County Water and Sewer Advisory Board, and I've got to say that I've been thoroughly impressed with the work that Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Wright, Director of the Drain Commissioner, do and the explanations for this, and that they really do attack the costs and explain things well to all the township representatives that attend those meetings. So my hat's off to a very well-run system, and, you know, they're looking forward with this project, or with all these projects, and that's something that, you know, we see around the country, maybe some infrastructure that hasn't been forecasted, and we see a huge sinkhole down in Macomb County that I forget what the total dollar amount was for it, but, you know, the economic impact and what have you that that brought on that community was huge. And thankfully, we haven't had anything, you know, that impact, that size of an impact to us. But, you know, we're trying to grow our township, and the only way we're going to do that is by investing in infrastructure. Unfortunately, it's, it's not real glitzy, you can't see it. You know, people think, like I said, you put it in the ground, and it's there forever, but it does take, you know, keeping that up to date. And unfortunately, a lot of our system is getting to that point where it's going to need to be replaced, but thankfully, we've got people that are looking forward to that and figuring it out, so. And thanks for your work with the DPW, too.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Limada, anything you want to add with this?
I think John alluded to it about the Kersley Creek Interceptor. You guys will be getting a presentation in regards to that project, just from the sheer size of it. One of the things that the Township Board needs to know is that the Kersley Creek Interceptor Project doesn't move forward without Grand Blank Township's participation. So it is going to be, it's a big project, it's expensive, but at the same time, if we say no to participating in that Kersley Creek Interceptor, it just means that we're going to have to say yes to doing some improvements on our own about District 6 and 11. And the one thing that won't happen is it won't address the flooding issues that we have up in that northwest corner. So there will be, we'll put together a whole benefit analysis, and so when John makes his presentation to the board, hopefully you'll have more than enough information to kind of digest on it. It's not something that you're going to get a presentation and asked to be, make a motion. It's going to take you some time to review it, get some questions and answers done, but it is going to be a pretty major undertaking, but I think it's, it's pretty important for our region, quite frankly.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Okay, next on our agenda, I also like, while we're still under privileged presentation, I just want to introduce Mr. Bush, Paul Bush. He's on our agenda here in our consent agenda. We'll be voting to appoint him to the Planning Commission. We have a vacancy. Mr. Ed Brown is stepping down, and I want to recognize Mr. Brown. I believe he served on our Planning Commission and our Site Plan Committee, our ZBA, for I think close to 20 years now. And we have another individual I want to recognize, too, that served on our Board of Review for probably a similar amount of time, Earl Hagan. But I wanted to hold off until we were meeting in person so we could have both of them present. So we're going to be doing that here in the next couple of weeks. So, good evening, and I know that we put some information in the packet about Mr. Bush. He's served on Township Board in the past and also served on the Planning Commission as well. So he brings some experience with them, and we do have some new folks on the Planning Commission, so we're balancing it with some people with experience and those that are, that are new. So that'll be good. At this time, I think we'd entertain a motion to accept the Consent Agenda.
Motion to approve. I'll make the motion to approve, and we need to see a second.
Ms. Hugo supports.
Okay. Motion by Robertson, second by Hugo. Record roll call. Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee White? Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Very good. Seven, nothing.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Consent Agenda is approved.
Thank you. Under new business, our election is coming up on May?
Fourth.
Fourth, and so we don't, we're scheduled to have a board meeting then. So what we are looking at is moving that to May 6th. It's a Thursday. Would that work for everyone, do you know, or? Seven o'clock?
Works for me, and on behalf of the Clerk's Office, I want to thank you for the accommodation. We may very well need the space.
As we may have our, have to have our meeting out at Bicentennial Park.
Well, there is precedent for that, isn't there?
I do have a Planning Commission meeting on that day.
Planning Commission?
At seven.
We may have to move the Planning Commission meeting. I don't know, any thoughts, Dennis, on moving that, or Mr. Laddie?
You know, one of the issues, if you try to move to May 5th, generally after the election, they've got a, there's still some wrap-up that they do, and so, I mean, you know, there was potential that we could get it into May 5th. The other thing, I know nobody wants to meet on a Friday, but if you were to meet on, you know, that Friday, May 7th, if you could do an earlier start so you're not here late on a Friday evening potentially. You could always try to pull it off on the Monday, but again, they're setting up for the Tuesday election.
That's kind of tough. This place is kind of.
It defeats the purpose.
For the election. Would Friday, if we, would anybody be available Friday earlier if we just met to pay the bills? And if there's anything that?
I don't like the Friday meeting, I'll tell you.
All right.
May 10th or 11th, the following Monday or Tuesday, really to get in, pay the bills, then cover whatever else.
About the 11th. The 11th work? I'll tell you what, we'll send it out. Let's, let's schedule it for the 11th, and if it doesn't work, email myself or Dennis, Mr. Limada. Let's plan on the 11th at 7:00 PM right now, so.
7:00 PM.
What did you say the week? Is that again?
Is that?
It's a Tuesday.
Is that, is that soon enough to pay, to pay the bills, Mr. Limada?
It'll be, you know, you'll be meeting again on the 18th, so we'll just have a short cycle in there for the next AP run, but we're still gonna, we can, if, it's far enough in advance that we can let everybody know that anything that needs to be paid needs to be brought in. And if you guys are going to meet on the 11th, instead of having that AP run ready for the 4th, we'll push it back to the 7th, and we'll, we'll pick up quite a bit. I think we'll be fine. We're really only extending it a week. And if there's something that we have to get out early, we'll try to get it into the AP run prior to that for your next meeting.
One of the things that I would like to do, I know it's some board business, but we need to do some board photos, and so I'm wondering if our next board meeting, we can come prepared to, if we, I'll send out an email, but we get here a little bit early for the board meeting?
You mean, wearing a tie?
Yeah, we can wear a tie that night, but.
I will not wear a tie.
Yeah. Oh, come on, Sarah. But, so we'll plan on the next board meeting, doing some photos, and we'll send out an email as to what time folks need to get here to do that. Okay. We also have the date, too, that I think everybody was emailed, as far as we're doing our board strategic plan. I'm excited about getting that together and putting that meeting together. So with that, Sarah, anything to report on the Planning Commission?
Do not have anything to report.
Okay. All right. Mr. White, anything on zoning Board of Appeals? Okay.
Mr. Supervisor?
Yes.
Before you go, on your future agenda items?
Yes.
I think that Planner Smith was hoping to weigh in on an item just to, for the board, so.
Absolutely. Let's back up, and we'll go to Mr. Smith. I apologize. Good evening, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Just something to put on the board's radar. I've had some calls and some emails regarding medical marijuana grows. I know this is a touchy subject, but this is something we're going to have to get in front of before we're scrambling to try and fight it going forward. So here in the next couple of meetings, I'd like to get with Attorney Laddie, get with Giffles as well, and get some language put in front of the board and trying to get ordinance passed, so that way we don't have to fight this, and we can get ahead of it.
Okay. Was that the Planning Commission was going to look into it?
Well, yeah, and there are two versions. I mean, there's, there's a two-part, two-step process for this that we propose. The first is a, is a general registration ordinance that will be a police power ordinance that the Planning Commission doesn't necessarily have jurisdiction over. You could, you could refer to them if you want to do that. The second phase is directly relating to the Planning Commission. That is trying to decide whether or not there are any particular districts where we would allow the caregiver grow facility. So if you, and that is true that we referred, we certainly referred the planning element to the Planning Commission. If you would like also, and this is subject to Mr. Smith's concurrence, if you'd like them to also take a look at that registration ordinance, we could do that as well. So they'd be looking at technically something that's not really in their jurisdiction, but they really kind of go hand in hand. And so is that, and it's interesting to, Mr. Smith's, it's like he's coming out of the heavens, but if that's something that, that is workable for him, we can certainly have them take a look at that as well.
Yes, I concur.
Okay. All right. We have a few other things that'll be coming down the pike here, too, in terms of ordinances that we want to look at. Mr. Fike?
Is, is the chief on line?
Fire chief or police chief? They're both, yes, they're both on police and fire chief. You have a question? Yes, yeah, Mr. Fike had asked for an explanation with regard to the mental health program that. So Chief Wiles, would you be able to join us? Good evening.
Good evening. How is everybody?
Good. How are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Could you kind of tell us, could you walk us through a little bit of what the program is that, I know you partnered with Genesee County Health Department, I think, right?
Yeah, we did. Genesee Health Systems.
Okay.
So let me, let me take you back a little bit. I'll tell you how we got to where we are today. Pre-pandemic, we were working on a project called the One Mind Campaign. And the One Mind Campaign is a program through the IACP, which is the International Association Chiefs of Police. And the One Mind Campaign is a collaboration between law enforcement, mental health, and the community to better serve people in mental health crisis. And it's a four-step program. You have to have sound policy. You have to have a partnership with the mental health agency in your community, and you have to provide training to your officers in mental health first aid and crisis intervention team. So we were working our way through that, then the pandemic hit, and the last part of that puzzle was training in CIT or Crisis Intervention Team, and we're unable to get that accomplished. During that time, we already had our partnership forming with GHS. We're working well with them towards getting this program up and running. During that time, during the pandemic, GHS received a grant from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services to purchase some iPads. And they reached out to us and said if we wanted to partner with them on a behavioral health urgent care program or a virtual program where, when law enforcement has contact with someone going through a mental health crisis in the field, and they are no threat to themselves or others, but just need some help, maybe they're not sure where to go, we can provide them immediate virtual assistance with mental health professionals from GHS. And that's where we are today. That partnership and that program is up and running. We started that program early last month. So far, it's been very successful. We've, we've been able to help provide assistance to about five people. We have nine sergeants and officers in our department currently trained in how to properly use the iPad and coordinate with GHS health professionals. And like I said, it's been, it's been a very positive impact for our community so far.
Very good. Did that answer your question, Mr. Fike?
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chief. Okay. So, Mr. Fike, anything on Metro Alliance? No. To report? Anything, Mr. Raridan? Anything, Mr. Kilmer, Treasurer Kilmer? Report on? Okay. Clerk Robertson?
We continue to make progress toward the May 4th election. We had a Elections Committee meeting this evening where we were, it was a necessary step to employ the people that will be working the polls and working our AV counterboards on the election. All is going well.
How are we doing on election workers?
We've got everything well-staffed.
Very good. Okay. Attorney Laddie, anything?
Just briefly, this morning, I argued in the Court of Appeals remotely on behalf of Grand Blank Township regarding a tax tribunal case that we have pending with McLaren headquarters. The issues, and I think I've perhaps sent you a, just a brief outline of what's going on in this case, but the issue is whether or not that building, which, which our position is that it's primarily an office or administrative building, whether that qualifies for the tax exemptions under the tax code as a medical facility or a charitable organization. And our assessing department has spent a lot of time working on this issue. It's, it's an interesting one from a case law perspective, because typically, you don't usually see standalone administrative offices, particularly ones that cost several million dollars, where there's no actual activity or medical treatment or services provided on the property. What happened, and this is, this case involves three tax years, 2018, 19, and 20. And what happened was, the, through a nuance in the, in the state law, their 2018 appeal was dismissed as untimely. And the other two years, 19 and 20, were able to go on into, into the tax tribunal. And our, and by the way, we have cross motions for summary disposition on 2019 and 2020. So we're expecting the tribunal to, to give us a ruling on whether they are entitled to those exemptions for those two years. 2018, though, the McLaren appealed that to the Court of Appeals, and so we had that oral argument today, and we'll stand by, and I think we've got probably a 30 to 60-day runway for a decision from them, and probably also from the tax tribunal. But I thought, just since it actually happened to occur today, and we had a meeting, might as well bring you up to date on it, so we'll keep you apprised. And, and just for your, just, and I don't want to ruin Mr. Limada's night, but each tax year accounts for about $45,000, I think, in revenue to the Township. And it's, it's worse for the county. I think it's closer to maybe $250,000. So McLaren has a lot at stake, and Grand Blank Township has a lot at stake, but we'll see how that turns out. It's a fascinating, believe it or not, it's a fascinating issue when you get.
Sure. So one of the interesting parts of that, too, Mr. Laddie, I find is that, so we, we get about 17% of the taxes that we collect, so if our portion is 45,000, you can imagine what some of the other entities, so we've got the school district that has a stake in this, Mott Community College, which actually, when you look at your tax bill, I think Mott gets a little bit more than the township. So all these entities are, their funding's at stake in this as well.
That's absolutely true, and one of my pet peeves, and someday when, when we have time to, for me to gripe about this, is that in smaller cases, even though those, those other entities have a lot at stake, they don't share in the cost of defense of these cases. of these cases. So when you get an individual tax case, we could have experts and, and we could have court time that sometimes exceed by a multiple of, of anywhere from two or three to 10, the cost of defending just our portion for the benefit of the other entities. Now, that isn't so much, and, and actually, when you, when you're looking at the other side of it, when you're looking at money that could be taken away, it, it's good to have that ratio. But most of the time, we're doing all the heavy lifting and the other communities, the other entities are getting the benefit of it.
Is there anything preventing them from providing additional support to our battle or, or in these cases?
That, that is an issue that's gone back and forth over the years. And, and generally, there is, there isn't a method for us to compel their, their cooperation in that. And so, and they, and many of them, particularly in Genesee County, have said, we're not interested in that at all. We're just, we're free to ride on your back.
Well, okay.
So stay tuned. I, I hope it works out. But it, it's a tough issue for us, frankly. But we're giving it a try and see how it turns out.
Okay. Well, good luck for all of our site.
Yes, amen.
Okay, Mr. Limada?
Not a lot outside of my written report. You guys all got that. But just a couple of key points out of there. The part of the reorganization that we went through with creation of the Department of Public Services, we did a posting for the position of the Assistant Director of DPS. And that, we've gone through, we had one internal candidate for that position. And we're going to probably award, award that to him in the near future. But part of that, again, we just had Mr. Potter here. But with he going to work for the county water and waste, we no longer have him as a consultant. And we're bringing all of that consulting duties in-house. So it's being spread out between the Department of Public Services, GIS, you know, DPW. So there is a offset to what we're doing as far as the reorganization goes. The other thing about the reorganization, we've been sitting down with both the part-time and full-time firefighters' unions for the fire department with conversations about what we're looking to do there as we continue to grow. And one of the things that the pandemic taught us is we've got two fire stations. Number one, which is housed here, which will be another subject that you'll hear about in the future. But number two, that's over on Baldwin Road. And when we split from the city, it's interesting in that when you look at your ISO rating, basically insurance rating, that tells you how you're doing. We were a five when we were combined with the city. When we split, we went to a four. We got better. And the city had their first rating, and they were also a four. So by splitting up, we ended up with, you know, even though we had this other fire station here, but we've got this one manned. And during the pandemic, we didn't have the space here to have all of the firefighters in one place. So we've had to have firefighters over at Station Two. One thing we've seen is that it shaved off a considerable amount off of our response times by having the other fire station on the south end. And so we've been working us through the reorganization is to really take a look to see if we can afford to do some remodeling over at Fire Station Number Two and make that a manned station. Because the amount of service level that we're going to be able to increase and provide residents is going to be phenomenal when we can run a truck out of Baldwin Road and another one from the north side here. You know, eventually, we had always talked about putting a new fire station over on the former Playland property on Dort. With the Dort extension going through, it gives them a straight shot from north to south. When we did the mapping a couple of years ago to look at response times to see where it made sense to locate this fire station, this did make the most sense. And in fact, when you look at our fire response times, they're all well within NFPA standards. But I really will encourage the board as we move forward to maybe make that a permanent solution with the manned fire station out at Number Two. That would require us to do a little bit shakeup. And we've been working through the unions on a deputy chief position as full-time. We currently have a deputy chief. It's just that it is a part-time position. And with the amount of administration, we've, we're still a relatively young department as far as coming over into the township, because it's been not quite two years. So we're learning as we go. But I like the plan that we're putting together. The unions have been very good to work with, you know, like usual. And we're making pretty good progress. So I may be coming to you very soon with a discussion, much like the Assistant DPS Director is to, is to do a budget amendment to fund a full-time deputy chief in our fire department as well. I think it just ups the service level. And like I said, I have to work through the budget dollars first before I can make the recommendation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Limada. And before we commence this evening, I want, well, after we, we break, I'd like to, those that we asked to serve on the task force for the Compensation Committee, I'd like to just get together here briefly for a few minutes. And we've got a couple of dates I want to look at before this meeting. Ms. Hugo had brought an idea that I, I thought about a few years ago, and that's having some type of cleanup day, that volunteers, if they wanted to clean up on some of the, the major roads or what have you. So I'd like to think about if we could explore that idea, too, at some point here. I know we had quite a few residents offer to, to assist. But we want to make sure everybody stays safe. And I think that's probably the biggest concern. So maybe we'll look at something along those lines. So with that, I think I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Raridan, supported by?
Move.
Kilmer? Okay. Motion and support. Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 8:18 PM.
Thank you.
Scott?
Very good.